So exactly what was the meaning of that reply about something in the ...
The water. Bring the water.
You know, he was. I gotta take it out of myself. Well, I have to ... Where's my water? Back to the house. Yes. Back to the car.
All right, I'd like to call the council committee meetings to order. And I just want to make one announcement. I know many of you are here regarding the golf concession. And we do not allow public comment at committee meetings. So just be aware of that. But we are going to begin with a presentation by Joseph Culver ... Culver? Culver, excuse me, from NBT. Mr. Culver? Or Mr. Mayor, did you want to say something first?
Just thank Joe for being here tonight. It's been almost two years. We've been dealing with some of the distressed housing in the city. And I consider myself fortunate, the city's fortunate, to have a number of real estate companies and banks who have stepped forward to try and do things that are unique to the Schenectady market. Every one of our houses of distressed property has a history. They tend to be more complicated. A lot of other communities are not dealing with things quite as well as we are because banks tend to shy away from some of these. And we've, again, been very fortunate where banks have stepped up to the plate. They work with city staff. The realtors are working with the banks. The banks are working with realtors, working with prospective buyers. And so again, fortunate to have Joe here tonight. We're, NBT Bank is again crafting a mortgage package that is really unique to the Schenectady market. And just on behalf of the city, Joe, I thank you for being here. Thank the team at NBT for working with us. And we look for a long-term relationship that is beneficial to both parties. But thank you, and I would ...
Sure. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, and what you see on your handout, there's actually two different pages there. The one on the top is the newest commitment that we are making. And we're pledging $2.5 million for residential homes in the city of Schenectady. This is for the purchase of either a one- or a two-family property. A couple of the special features which make it attractive for anyone looking to purchase in Schenectady is that we're only requiring a 5% down payment for these. And there's no mortgage insurance that's going to be charged to the borrowers. These loans are ... we're keeping them in our own portfolio, insuring them directly. So the cost savings to the consumer can be anywhere from a low of $50 to a high of $120 a month, not having that additional mortgage insurance cost. The other thing that we're going to do is we're pricing them right at the market so there's no additional premium that's being charged to any of the borrowers who are looking to purchase a home in the city of Schenectady. So again, that's a $2.5 million pledge for residential mortgages. On the sheet behind that, we're renewing our additional pledge, which we came out with a couple of years ago that the mayor had mentioned, for an additional $1 million. And this is to service any lower moderate income individuals that are looking to buy a house in the city. So those individuals for that program, they have to be a first-time homebuyer. Again, their only requirement is a 2% down payment. So a little bit less money. And then we require that they work with better neighborhoods for the homebuyer education. We want to make sure that they go through those classes. So we've worked with Ed August and his group to put that piece together. So two buckets here that we're talking about. So there's a $1 million pledged for first-time homebuyers in the city of Schenectady, only a 2% down payment. And those loans, we actually discount their interest rate a quarter percent below what conforming rates are. So they get an additional advantage as well. And then the $2.5 million pledge is for anyone. You do not have to be a first-time homebuyer. It's anyone looking to buy a property in the city of Schenectady, a one- or two-family home. So any questions on the information or the details?
Excellent.
Good.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, no, and again, we appreciate working with the mayor and the dedication that he's had to promote homeownership. We'll continue to look at ways. We work with the MODs. You know, if there's a need, if you certainly want to hear about it, please, you know, just put something on the table and we'll be more than happy to consider it. But we think these are pretty attractive programs to help more homebuyers come into the city of Schenectady and enjoy what you have there.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I am recommending we switch the agenda around and start with health and rec.
Can you call for order health and recreation? Do you want to start with that initiative?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to start with the second item on the agenda, discussion regarding the concession contract in the golf course. Mr. Wallen, Mr. Winkler?
Thank you. Two weeks ago, the evaluation committee for the golf course concessions proposal made a recommendation based off of the two proposals that were received. The recommendation of the golf course evaluation team was for a contract to be awarded to Ms. Polterak for the term of three years for concessions and lease at the Schenectady State Municipal Golf Course. That was met with some discussion by the committee. And it was recommended that it be reexamined and possibly go with Tim Trier and Ms. Deborah. That is kind of where we left it. We went to the council with a, I believe, endorsement with the health and recreation committee. It was so pulled at the council meeting. And we are now back to further that discussion with a full council. So I have no new information at hand. We did not solicit any additional information. We did not do any interviews. So what we have is the information that was provided still. We do not have any additional information at this time. So I would just ... Phil, do you have any further comments?
Well, I just wanted to comment that when we reviewed the two proposals we received, we did it with a numerical evaluation, as you all know. It was close. But you can't put everything into design criteria in an RFP. The one thing that you can't build in is the customer satisfaction. And I think it stands on its own that we have a lot of customer satisfaction with the current concession. One of the council members, I think it was Mr. Riggi, had made mention, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. I think this is far from a broke situation. I think she delivers an outstanding product in terms of food, service, prices, and ... but it isn't broke. So that's all I have to say. Question?
Discussion?
I think, you know, when we talked last time, there was pros and cons of each side, right? So there was the money issue. There was the fact that the current concessionaire was doing a decent job at the time. I don't ... I've been there a couple of times, I think, in the last couple of years, so I don't have a lot of time to play golf. But, you know, current concessionaire hadn't really heard complaints since we voted out of committee and made the newspaper, received a lot of phone calls, assuming from some of the folks in this room, with comments on both sides. Majority of them were saying they're in favor of the current concessionaire. I think personally, this is one of those six of one, half dozen of the other situations. You have, I think, both potential candidates here are going to be able to provide good service. One has been providing good service, so they're proven. The other one has reputable businesses in the city. So that's somewhat proven as well. So I don't think we're going to go wrong either way. But we're back here because we didn't have enough votes to vote through the full council. So, you know, I think, is anybody changing their mind? Or anybody have a different opinion? Or, I mean, as I said, I'm kind of a six of one, half dozen of the other. I think both of them are good. One of them brings a little bit more revenue, which is something to be considered. But then there's the feedback that I received from quite a few calls. I'd say a few have meant a lot.
Yes, Ms. Penn?
I was just going to say, you know, we had a process in place with a committee that included a restaurateur, an avid golfer, the engineer, city engineer. Granted, it was a very close vote, but they did take a vote. They did come through with a recommendation. And I am of the opinion, we should go with their recommendation. And I mean, I think this is a, in many ways, this is a nice problem to have, you know, that we've got two good choices. But I guess I feel I'm kind of with the, if it's not broke, don't fix it side, which I said about a couple of weeks ago.
Ms. Perazzo?
I want to clarify one thing, and that is, I will not support the recommendation. However, I want to make it very clear that it has nothing to do with the ability of the people in place now, nor does it have, you know, a lack of appreciation or respect for people's opinions. I look at this as a business decision. Now, I believe there was one point separating the two. And in some of the areas of whether the other applicants could execute food service properly, I think the numbers were off. We have two very successful business people with very good reputations and, you know, good businesses. So as a businessperson in the hospitality industry for 27 years, and in the interest of full disclosure, I've known Deb a long time, I look at it as one of my jobs on the council is to, number one, contain costs within the city. And number two, look for positive sources of revenue. And when a business proposal comes through with a $10,000 difference in revenue to the city, I think that's a very important factor as a councilperson to consider. Now, that being said, quality cannot be put aside for revenue. So if we had someone who didn't have a solid lifetime of restaurant business in their background, this would be a different conversation because no revenue is worth compromising the quality of one of our institutions. But stepping back, as I said, for me to lay my head down on the pillow at night and feel like I did my job and did it properly, I look at this as a business decision of both people having wonderful reputation and quality. And then I feel it's my job as a councilperson to make a decision that's of the greatest benefit to the city of Schenectady and our citizens that live here. So I just wanted to qualify that because it's not a matter of who I think deserves a contract more. It's really, for me, numbers and cents on two equal qualified people.
Yes. Ms. Perazzo?
I agree with a lot of what Ms. Perazzo said. However, we have all, I think, this week and in the past few weeks, heard from people who frequent the golf course, who support our city municipal golf course, and heard their voices. And part of what we do is seeking certainly revenue and extensive revenue for the city. But I think, to my mind, the other thing that we do is we listen to the people who support the city of Schenectady. And we have heard, I have heard, as I can only speak for myself, loud and clear, from those individuals who do support the golf course and do support the current vendors at the golf course. And with that being said, I would have to say, and I am not on health and rec committee, my support would be behind the current proprietors of the golf course. We are looking here, and I can see loud and clear, we're the support of many of the city residents that support our municipal golf course. And just again, to echo what Mr. Winkler said, we have not heard that this system has been broke at all. If nothing else, we've heard nothing but wonderful things about the current proprietors.
Ms. Rini?
I'm of the same mind. I haven't changed my mind on what I said two weeks ago. We field a lot of phone calls on different issues in the city, and we hear complaints about things, too. You know, that's part of it. I have not ever fielded one complaint on the concessionaire at the golf course and the condition of the course. There were some complaints a few years ... that's before I was on the council. I heard rumblings, I don't play golf. I haven't never went there and need to. But I have to say, everybody seems to be very thrilled. And I had a lot of phone calls also, even though I'm supporting the current concessionaire. I also got phone calls reaffirming that this decision is the right thing for me to make as a councilperson. So again, that was my quote, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I really feel that. We have something that's working good. Why should we change a horse in midstream? I don't understand that. It's working good. Everyone seems to be very happy. So as far as dollars and cents, I don't know if we can even weigh that because maybe they're bringing more people to the course to play golf. So they're bringing in more revenue that way. I can't tell you that. That would have to be in other figures. But there's something to be said for that. The other thing I've been hearing is they're very accommodating if somebody has tournament or something, and if they want something different on the menu, they're able to provide that very easily. The prices are good. They did look at the menu. The prices are very good. And again, I don't think it's a bad choice we would make either way. But I have to say, I'd rather stay with what we have because that is the known quantity. Even though the people that have been in the food business for many years, I understand that. But this is a concession at the golf course. It's different. So we have a known quantity. We have a somewhat known quantity, but not as much as the one that's there now. So I'm supporting the current concessionaires.
Two weeks ago, when we were in this room, we had before the proposals, and well, were they sent to us, the proposals and actually recommendations from the review committee. And I had some concerns about it and because they were very close. And my vote was based on the fact that one concessionaire would be bringing in more money. Since that time, I also have had phone calls, emails, you know, face-to-face contact with people who support the current concessionaire. And beyond the fact that they like them, they talk about how they do an excellent job. I've gotten information about comparisons on what it was like a few years ago to what it is now and how that all works. So in taking that into consideration, in taking into consideration the fact that, first of all, let me just state that I don't always go, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Because I think sometimes, you know, we need to take a look at what's going on. But taking all that into consideration and also taking into consideration the fact that, yes, we're going to get $6,000 out front, you know, initially. But will we lose business there? You know, how's that going to change what's going on there? I've always said, and I continue to say, that I listen to the community that's going to, that is being, you know, affected by it. In this case, it's the golf community. So, you know, having taken all that into consideration, all the input that I've gotten, it's probably been the most I've gotten on any issue that we've discussed, for me anyway, since I've been on this council, other than the budget. So considering that, I've really changed my decision on that, and I will be supporting the current concessionaires. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we continue with the health and rec?
Sure. Why don't we ... All right, so for all of you, this will come before a final vote at the council meeting on Monday night. Thank you all for being here. Yes. Thanks. Okay. We have one agenda. The Rose Garden Restoration Committee. What you have in front of you is a continuation of an earlier discussion this year wherein the city was contacted by the Rose Garden Restoration Committee, asking for the city to look at the revenue that has been created by the Rose Garden and to contemplate whether or not a portion of it or the revenue in its total should be considered to be reimbursed or given to the restoration committee in recognition of the work that they do there to make that facility as wonderful as it is. So it was back in late spring, I believe, early summer potentially, that we first spoke about this. And I just want to let you know that right now, and I just checked before I came down here, the city has received $1,615 in revenue. It's just as stated in your legislative request. And we have received from the Rose Garden Restoration Committee proof of expenses that equal $1,961. And that's just a portion of their expenses. They've certainly expended much more than that. And the latter that they've sent to the city is requesting that, again, the council look at whether or not they could, it is appropriate for the city to return funds or to disburse funds to the committee.
I think part of it's a question of, you know, do we feel we should keep any of that money for administrative expenses or anything like that? But, and we've never, we've talked about it, but I don't think we ever actually resolved it.
Didn't we keep a small amount of it in the past? I mean, did all the fees associated with it stayed within the city originally, right? And are there any expenses associated with the Rose Garden that, from the city standpoint, that we would need to take into consideration?
There is some support services that are given, grass cutting around, there is some cleanup, you know, water. We try and work with them in the grand scheme of things. It's the decision of the council. If you gave them 95%, we kept a little, it would be fine. If you give 100%, it would be fine. It's a, you know, pays off for everybody that is an asset there that we want to continue to build and have the reputation grow. And this, again, it's somewhat of a model that seems to be evolving from what has been done for the Rose Garden, what would be done at the Greenhouse. There's another group raising funds there. There would be some activities there that might be getting some revenue that would be derived from some of the activities at the Greenhouse. So what would the council do with that? Would you turn it all back over to it? Do you keep some of it? But again, at this point, the dollars in the grand scheme of things are somewhat insignificant. So it's broad, whatever the council decides.
Okay.
Not mad, I think, you know, Gary said, this group of people are doing a phenomenal amount of work for $1,615. Right? If we kept 90, if we kept 5% of that, what would we spend it on? Right? We'd be in a bottle of water for one meeting, maybe, hey? So I think dollar for dollar, it goes a heck of a lot further in the Rose Garden Committee. I mean, they got an award, the number is back being the third nicest municipal rose garden in the world or something. I mean, you know, it's money well spent. I think we're getting a lot of return on. So I'm in favor of giving it a whole lot of sign.
Well, I'm obviously not in the committee, but we're talking about, I mean, if we keep 5% or 10%, we're talking about $80 or $160, which is ridiculous. Because $80, $160 could probably go really far in the Rose Garden. So, I mean, it's ...
We spent some meetings with the city council where those numbers are insignificant. Just so I can ...
Any other questions?
I'm moving when you said, I think that we give it off to the Rose Garden. They've done it for years as volunteers. So, you know, raising any funds, I think you should go right back into it because that's what they do with it anyway. So.
I'll move that we give it all to the Rose Garden.
Okay. Sure. All those in favor? Anything else for health and recreation? If not, motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Okay, very good. Now, one slightly out of order situation here. Ms. Perazzo invited Mr. Hoffman to come to the meeting to talk about this one property issue that we were dealing with. We did not have it listed in the claims committee meeting tonight. But, and I know he has to be at a county legislature meeting in about half an hour. So if we could possibly convene claims and go into executive session for 10, 15 minutes and ...
Then we'll recess and go back.
And then we'll reset. Yeah. Yeah.
Call for order claims? Motion to go into executive session?
Some moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Oh, okay. City Development and Planning?
Yes.
Right? We're looking for Mr. Wallen.
I just said, we're on.
Okay. Thanks. Can we do the transfinder? Okay, let me call City Development and Planning to order. I guess item number three, the transfinder presentation at the council. Do you want to talk to that, Chad?
Well, I would just refer folks to the backup that's in there, similar to the presentation that Bill Morris provided with factors at council meeting last week. This, Antonio Civitello would be coming in for a transfinder to do a very similar presentation in relation to Schenectady's economic strength.
Good. Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay. Good. All right. Item number one, the safety of schools. Mr. Wallen?
This is a authorization by the council, authorizing the mayor's designation to enter into agreement with the New York State DOT for the, to accept funding for the safety of schools project that we've been talking about on and off for a little over a year now. We received approval in September. However, we were waiting for the adaptation of the budget. The budget was adopted, and now we are here to ask to enter into agreement with the understanding that the project cannot commence until the project is bonded and the funds are set up appropriately.
Questions? I'm Ms. Porterfield.
And I probably don't remember this, what was the city's portion of it?
The city's portion of it is $272,000.
Okay. And our previous discussion, was there any, what fund did that come from? What did that go like that?
It would come out of our paving fund.
Okay. So there's no involvement of CBPG dollars with this particular project? Remember that conversation when we first talked about it? Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this, authorizing the mayor. Okay. Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Ms. Perazzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And item number two, calling for a public hearing on alteration of lot size.
Okay. About three years ago, the engineer made some changes to the city code. And this is not the zoning ordinance. This is actually alteration of lot sizes. It's what section? Is that part of the engineer code?
Section 230.
And one of the things it did was it made the consolidation of residential lots time-consuming and very expensive. And everybody on the property disposition committee and anybody involved with foreclosure has talked about this. And what we would like to do is make it easier for people to consolidate residential lots. If you own a house and there's a vacant lot next to you, it should be easy for you to just bring the two together, not have to pay a $500 fee, get a $1,000 survey and everything. So, and it also helps out for foreclosure because a lot of times, there's a house and there's a lot next to it, and they're both owned by the same person. They pay the property taxes on the house, not the lot. We foreclose on the lot. We can't give it back to them when we're stuck with it. So we want them consolidated so they pay the taxes on both at once. So what we are recommending a change just be done to this section 232, alteration of lot sizes, adding G, which says, "Any and all of the above requirements may be waived by the zoning officer or planner upon application for consolidation of contiguous residential lots." So then it just goes to the assessor. We all kind of run it through our checks, goes to the assessor. The assessor files a lot consolidation. There's no expense. And again, we don't, it doesn't happen a lot, but it makes it much easier. We've got a lot of, we have hundreds of contiguous lots right now that people don't want to take from us because they're already using them tax-free. They're sitting there. There's no reason for them to pay $1,500 to take these properties over. We can make it easier for them to take it over. Then it gets it out of our hands and into their hands.
Mr. Erickson?
So would we have the authority to combine them without the homeowner wanting it?
No, they need to.
They need to want it. We can't just go and say, oh, by the way, your lot just got there.
Right. They need to want it. They both need to be in their name. If we sell a lot to somebody, the requirement is, we can make them then. We say, you can take this lot for whatever we sell it to for, but it needs to be ...
Is it, do we also have the option of denying it if we feel some reason it's not addressed to the city to say, yeah, we just don't want you to combine it for reasons?
Well, no, they could go through the, we could deny the waiver, and then they could go through the expensive process of getting the survey. We want to do the consolidation. I don't see why we wouldn't let them unless engineering can always come up with a reason why it does not make sense to do it. We have the infrastructure on site or ...
So do you think, you know, you mentioned the folks that are, currently have a lot next door, they're using it for free, they just don't want to pay taxes on it. What makes you think even if we're going to offer it for nothing or non-money, they're still going to want to do that?
Well, any incentive makes it more likely we're going to do.
of lot sizes, adding G, which says, any and all of the above requirements may be waived by the zoning officer or planner upon application for consolidation of contiguous residential lots. So, then it just goes to the assessor, we all kind of run it through our checks, goes to the assessor, the assessor files a lot consolidation, there's no expense. And again, we don't, it doesn't happen a lot, but it makes it much easier. We've got a lot of, we have hundreds of contiguous lots right now that people don't want to take from us, because they're already using them tax-free, they're sitting there, there's no reason for them to pay $1,500 to take these properties over. We can make it easier for them to take it over, then it gets it out of our hands and into theirs.
Mr. Erickson.
So, would we have the authority to combine them without the homeowner wanting it?
No, they need to.
They need to want it. We can't just go and say, oh, by the way, your lot just got better.
Right, they need to want it, they both need to be in their name. If we sell a lot to somebody, the requirement is, we can make them that. We say, you can take this lot for whatever we sell it to for, but it needs to be.
Is it, do we also have the option of denying it, if we feel for some reason it's not the best interest of the city, to say, yeah, we just don't want you to combine it for reasons?
Well, no, they could go through the, we could deny the waiver, and then they could go through the expensive process of getting the survey, and so on, through this consolidation. I don't see why we wouldn't let them unless engineering can always come up with a reason why it does not make sense to do it, we have the infrastructure on site, or.
So, do you think, you know, you mentioned the folks that are, currently have a lot next door, they're using it for free, they just don't want to pay taxes on it, what makes you think, even if we're going to offer it for nothing or nominal fee, they're still going to want to do that?
Well, any incentive makes it more likely we're going to do it, and again, the ones that we have, the, some that they're not using. If somewhere there's conflicts between two neighbors against the property, it'll certainly take properties out of our hands and get them into private ownership.
We want to be able to just move these properties sometimes, which are just, I should say largely, which are unbuildable, and this policy of the city has always been to offer it to adjacent property owners. There's two scenarios there, where you have one adjacent property owner who buys the whole thing, or you may want to just split it down the center, and people on both sides take a little bit. And so, there, we haven't been necessarily as aggressive in our marketing, and yes, people have been using them, sometimes that's to our benefit, because then we're not having to send out a crew to mow the grass, maintain it, at the same time, under strict liability, it's still our property, if something happens there, if we haven't done something, we can be responsible, but it's this overall marketing of property here, this will just add a little bit more flexibility and reduce some of the cost of those transactions, so that we probably will get a little bit of that money back when we actually go sell it. Where now, you've got all that cost in place, people don't want to pay anything, this way we may still get this money, it'll come in a different form, because they'll now pay for the property, do it, it'll work to our advantage also, where there may be a couple of lots that we will demolish houses, we want them consolidated, potentially be there to put up new structures in the place of some of the demolition, or other things that we're doing throughout the neighborhoods.
Other questions or comments?
Just, do you think there should be something added in there about a title search?
Well, you can do that, and again, this simplifies the process, but each one of these sales or transfers will still come back to the city council. So, yeah, you can put generic things in there, which is what we have there now, and people will say, oh, no, there's been a foreclosure, the title's cleared up.
Well. If you're consolidating the house and you have a mortgage, you're going to want to do a title search first, so.
Not if you're paying cash for it, not necessarily. If you don't have to, you're not going to.
Right, you don't have to, but.
And then you run into, oh, guess what, you know, geez, this, you know, has taxes due on it. I'm just saying, I mean, it's just something that.
But if the city is selling it, again, the, I can't say the only way, but 99% of the times, we've acquired it through foreclosure. So, that has cleared up the title.
And there are no taxes outstanding at that point.
And also, there's two minor changes in there for just technical corrections, and the question for you is, do you want to have a public hearing on December 23rd, or do you want to wait until January 13th? We're open to either one.
Okay, I just, one more, one more follow-up question, too, though. I'm looking at G, so it can be waived by a zoning officer or the planner, so does that mean if those, if those above are waived and okay by a zoning officer or the city planner, is that going to come back to the council? Or is that just going to be a dumb deal?
The sale of the property still has come back to the council.
It's the consolidation, that the process doesn't have to go to engineering with a survey for their approval.
Okay.
The city council has to approve this out.
So, the wording that has fully created minor controversies in the past, you can designate me or my designate, and, you know, you work it through.
Two more weeks.
Case by case basis.
And there are a number of these that don't involve us, where somebody owns the house and somebody owns a lot, and they just want to consolidate them, but they never need to.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to call for the public hearing, and I guess the question is, do we want it on the 23rd, or should we move it into January?
People aren't going to be paying attention.
No, they tend to speak.
In December, yeah. So, I'd say wait till January.
Would it be a Christmas present for all these people who are going to consolidate their lives?
Okay.
January.
Yeah.
First meeting, January.
Okay, Ms. Porterfield moves it, seconded by Ms. Perazzo, on favor?
Aye.
All right, and if something else to come before City Development and Planning, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Call to order government operations, and we have a call for public hearing, amending chapter 144 to include a dog enumeration fee.
So moved.
Can the clerk fill us in just for public record?
We've heard this many times, but, yeah, okay.
The deputy clerk will present.
So, for some additional backup information related to this, basically what it would be is that there is a proposed $15 enumeration fee for those identified by these census takers for not yet having their dog license, and then they would have three weeks to come flying, and if they didn't do so, then animal control would be notified, and they would come out and follow up with further action.
I think it should be $14.99.
Maybe $14.95. So, it's always better with a round number.
That's why we're holding a public hearing.
Yes, Ms. Porterfield.
That further action is, so did they go out and then they changed? What would that further action be?
Well, they would be given some kind of court appearance ticket, where they would have to follow up with city court, and then potentially have additional fines, and if the dog was collected by chance, there'd be costs for holding the dog overnight and so forth.
So, I think just more message of releasing the dog.
What dog?
We have a public hearing. Before we call for a public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Excellent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else to come before government operations? Ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Reconvening claims, motion to adjourn session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. All right. Thanks. Ms. Porterfield?
What dog?
We have a public hearing. Before we call for a public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Excellent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else to come before government operations? Ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.